Good evening and welcome. It is Fri—uh, it's Friday. I wish. It is Monday, February the 28th, and it is 6:30. And it is time—I called to order—the Planning Commission meeting for tonight. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and virtually by using Zoom. As Chair, I'll be leading the tonight's Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person, or you can join us online via Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you try leaving the meeting and then rejoin. This usually fixes the issue. Additional instruction on how to participate, and all kinds of other information are located online at the BurnsvilleMN.gov website in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is being available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to partis—submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us/join. You would type in the meeting ID 920-1993-1142. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting tonight. You can do that by calling 651-372-8299. Again, you would use the same meeting ID, which is 920-1993-1142. And for each public hearing, I'll open it up to a time when the callers may speak to that item. I'll give more instructions when we get to that point. Your call will be muted until then. Please note there might be a slight day—delay due to the differences in technology of speaking by phone. Please mute your computer since it brings up an echo due to delay. At any rate, that is all the information I have on that. You can find more information, of course, including the agenda packet, online at BurnsvilleMN.gov. We'll turn on now to the agenda. Any additions to the agenda, Commissioner? Seeing none, I'm going to turn to staff. Staff, any additions to agenda?
No changes.
No changes. With that, I would take a motion to adopt said agenda. Commissioner Awad.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Awad. Do I have a second? Commissioner Anderson.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda as listed in our backgrounds, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that moves forward. We had a meeting on the 14th of February, Valentine's Day, and the minutes were included in your background. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to read through those. Did you see any changes you'd like to make, commissioners? Staff, were any changes that you saw?
There are no changes from staff.
Good deal. With that, I will look for a motion to accept those minutes. Commissioner Bradock.
Motion to approve the minutes.
The motion to approve has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Timmerman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that is unanimous. We will move to the third item on the agenda, and that is the zoning and subdivision review, residential chapter layouts, changes in commercial and industrial discussion. I believe leading tonight's discussion is Regina Dean. She's the Assistant Community Development Director of the city of Burnsville. Ms. Dean.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission. Tonight, we have Kim Lindquist with WSB. She'll be going over a presentation, and we'll have some discussion items as well for the group to consider. It's been a while since we've been before you. I think fall of 2021 was the last time we had interaction with the Planning Commission on the zoning ordinance update. We were before the city council in early November, and they gave some direction on our residential changes that were proposed that the Planning Commission and members of the public had given input on for changes and were generally very supportive of the work and the changes that were done. They had a couple of follow-up questions, which Kim will address tonight. But largely, there was consensus to go ahead and move forward with making those ordinance changes. After we did that, we had some internal staff discussion about the layout of the proposed ordinance and decided to kind of take a step back and relook at the organization and the structure of how the city code is laid out. And that's what took some time, some reformatting and some template setting that Kim will go over. We hope to get your reaction to see if we are heading in a direction that gets us to the goal of being more user-friendly and just not only from a internal perspective, but also our external customers as well, our residents, our business owners, and others that use the city code. So with that, I will turn it over to Kim. If there's any questions, myself, Sarah, and even Kevin can help answer any questions that might arise throughout the presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you. A pleasure to be here again. As Regina mentioned, we've got a few things we want to just test on you folks and make sure you're feeling good about the modifications that we are proposing. So first, just a quick overview again. You know, the goal is really to review the structure of the ordinance, make it easier to understand, provide better clarity, make it easier to administer, and that ultimately evolves into a process that's clearer and probably more predictable for residents. So you kind of know what you're getting because you can read it, you understand it, you know the process you're going to take. And so again, those have always been the goals when we're talking about this, and that's why I think really led to one of the big modifications here in the layout is just the idea of like, what could we do better? So just quickly, again, public engagement has been ongoing, even though we haven't seen you in a bit. There is that project website where we put all the ordinance draft language, and that allows for comment opportunities for residents. We currently—there were two surveys. The second—the first one was the residential that we already provided the information to you. There is one right now posted on that website for businesses and property owners, developers, really anybody that's more in the commercial-industrial realm, and also anybody who's kind of used the process. So we're trying to, again, use that preference survey in terms of some views, but then also, again, the idea of, hey, how did you—what was your experience going through the process? Was it understandable to you? Are there any improvements? And we'll dive into that just a little bit more in a second. Very recently, we—Regina and I participated in a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee where we also flagged that survey again, hoping to get more participation, but also kind of briefly reviewed some of the goals of the project as well as just some fine points. It's only an hour, and they didn't have the whole ordinance in front of them, but we did try to highlight some areas and some potential changes. And then, just as Regina mentioned, we were here in late October and the council in November. So there are some things continuing to move forward more internally than publicly. So I just wanted to pull a couple of items out for you just again so you can see what we're looking at from this preference survey. This is one of the questions in terms of the photos and the ideas, you know, what do you think about the material standards? Are they restrictive, are they not? Do you like the appearance of the community? You know, those types of questions. Is the review process acceptable? Do you think the ordinance was—language was easy to har—easy or hard to understand? And is that a costly proposition for you? I checked the end of last week. We, I think, had about 15 people that responded. And interestingly, it was pretty much split. Understood it was hard. So we'll see if we can get some more people and maybe break that tie. Same kind of idea. Signs are always an issue with businesses. They would like more generally. They want quicker permitting. They—and often, the regulations are a bit hard to understand in terms of calculation, both for permanent and temporary. So the questions relate to that permitting process and the experience and the thoughts, regulations. And then, we do these photos, and you ask, what do you think of these? Too many signs, just right? Does this—you know, and then it's asked, is this—what's appealing? And then there's a dropdown. We should have—they should all be the same color. They should be all in the same location. They don't need to be anything. They could have more signs. It's kind of—we try to have a variety of different dropdowns so that you kind of hit the pros and the cons. And then, of course, there's always the opportunity for comment. Same with this, just an idea about the look. We did have some conversation exactly—specifically on this slide at the chamber because they were saying, oh, I'm concerned that just newer buildings might be more attractive than older buildings, that kind of thing. And that could be the case, but I think you would also find that often. That's because the new construction fits more with your existing codes and the design guidelines and architectural standards. They—there was quite a bit of discussion about the A building, so the one in the top left, where that would probably meet the exterior materials requirement because of the large amount of brick, but yet, it certainly looks probably older and more outdated. But again, it probably is older and more outdated. And so I think it also lends itself to the conversation about, well, good quality materials, at least they look well-maintained, they withstand the test of time, even if the architecture itself might date itself. So as we're talking, the residential restructuring that you saw in your very, very lengthy packet was to take—the existing ordinance has all those districts. R1, R1A, 2, 3, 4. Then we kind of reconverted them a little, and we tried to align them more with the comprehensive plan and the density requirements that we had. And we had that conversation as well as some of the flexibility issues. What we're doing now is looking at pulling all of those districts into one residential chapter. It's a fairly lengthy chapter, but if you were a resident, you could go to the residential chapter, find all the code that relates primarily to what you need to know. So it talks about the land uses associated. It also has the regulations for permitted or conditions for conditional uses, if those are appropriate. It also houses a fair amount of the general regulations and a table for lot dimensions. So it's lengthy, but it's in one spot, and hopefully, people don't have to shuffle around as much. Now, there are going to be some areas where we're going to have to reference other areas, and we've talked about that with the city clerk, that, you know, you'd link them, and so hopefully, you just send them on their way. But the more we can house in one spot, the view is that at least people will get a better—a fighting chance to find everything they need in one spot. So this is kind of an example. The—you know, the page to the left, it's just kind of the front end where we're saying, okay, all these use categories are here. So right away, boom, and then you say, wow, there's the general regulations, there's the building standards, there's my lot dimensions, and any supplemental provisions. So they're all right there. But again, it'll be a little more expansive just because, you know, there's a lot of information that's going to be put into one location. Then on the right, you can see the table where we've combined the uses and put it into a table. So you say, well, I want an accessory building. Oh, look, I can do that in all districts, pending the 1074 accessory building structures. So at least you know that you can do that onsite, and then you can always go to additional linkage if necessary that might give you the very definite standards associated. And we haven't quite figured it all out yet because there were a lot of items that went to that general standards. We're not sure we want to keep housing everything there because it's—that's also becoming very voluminous. So we might try to tie some back in just at the residential or just at the commercial or just in the industrial sections if we can try to make them only applicable to those—you know, those resident—or those zoning districts. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions about this. It's kind of—
I have a question about this, Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Timmerman.
Can we get this slide back up? Sorry about that. So the last slide that we looked at, my understanding here is that the information on the right is basically the same information that would be on the left, and it's just making it in a more readable visual format. Is that correct?
No, from the standpoint that the old ordinance would have itemized all those land uses. That list has gone away, and it is only in the table. So where you would say like, here's the permitted uses in the R1, you'll say, see table X. So you won't—you won't double up and list them and have the table. You'll just direct people to the table. Similarly, there's also a table for like the setbacks, and you'll just look at the table.
So to me, it seems like we're putting a user document in our ordinance. I mean, this is the type of visual document that, you know, a business or a homeowner would typically find on a website, not in a book of ordinances. And I guess my question is, are we then going to be doubling up by having some sort of table or document on the website? Are we going to put that table on the website? What is the final document that you intend for residents to use? And then, in addition to that, how do we legally cite to a table like that? You know, normally, you would cite to a specific chapter, section of your code. How would we do that with the table?
So if I understand the question, the table actually will be a section. So it'll be embedded into the into the ordinance. And so just as you're scrolling through the table, it'll just be section, you know, 93.702 or what have you. And we have done that in other—you know, if you go to other online, lots of people use tables. So it is something that's physically possible to do online. But it is, as you are correct—we've talked about too—that this can be a handout particular for people, maybe that uses as much, but certainly the setback in dimensional requirements as people are coming in and wanting questions about, you know, the accessory structure or decks or something. That's a great handout. So it doubles up, but in fact, it will be embedded in the ordinance.
Okay. So I guess just to follow up, I like the idea of the table. It makes it much more readable, it makes it much more user-friendly. I would think, though, that for like legal citation, you need to keep them fairly on point. And I mean, it can't be pages and pages because if you are trying to direct somebody to some very specific information, and you say, see table 4.2, and it's 40 pages, I mean, obviously, it would have to be very specific.
Right. Well, the intention is to make them a bit more condensed. I think the residential isn't overly large. You did receive the commercial-industrial, and that's pretty lengthy. But what we tried to do was have these subheadings, you know, like automobile uses or retail uses or something like that. And so that helps at least separate the uses rather than just having a long string of alphabetical, thinking that that might make more sense for people. If they know what they're looking for, they can just go to that kind of subject matter. But yes, I think, though, while it is onerous maybe for a longer table, it's also pretty difficult when you're telling them, look in the R2 or the B2, and then the B2 says, okay, go back to the B1 and see what's there. Two, you know, and then by the time you're at the B3, you're two in.
You forgot where you started.
So I think ultimately, at least it gives you a good snapshot. But you're right. And you're—you know, you're really kind of taking away my thunder. But the commercial-industrial, the idea is that we've tried to collapse those uses. So air conditioner sales, air conditioner repair, you know, all these repairs are grouped. Because what does it matter if they're repairing, you know, four small different kinds of engine or appliances, things? So that's part of the hope is to group them enough that even though you've still got a fair amount of uses, you—you can kind of tidy it up within that. And not only does it reduce the amount of lists, but it also allows the city some flexibility as people come up with, you know, frankly, new kinds of land uses that you might not immediately think of when you're writing your ordinance.
I love it. I think 99% of people aren't going to sit and read the book of ordinances, but the people that do need it will really benefit from this and geeks like—
I was going to say—
Chair and vice chair. And all my friends here will really like it. I think it's cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Awad.
Yeah, I applaud the effort to make this more—you know, more concise and more user-friendly. I'm curious, what—you know, what are other communities doing? Are we kind of blazing the trail with this kind of—this approach? Or is this consistent with what's—what other people are doing?
Well, perhaps because I work for a consulting firm that does a bunch of ordinances.
Yes.
We're doing tables pretty much everywhere. And part of it is, similar to the conversations we've had in Burnsville, is people have been modifying their ordinances as an issue arises. You know, so there's been—you can see where things have kind of been put into play, but there's not been that whole-scale review. And you've got—you know, like, I just looked at one today for a different city that was talking about like, you know, a printing shop. You know, you're like, okay, stop listing all these things because that's not even a thing anymore. So, you know, by having them grouped that way, you can be prepared for what the next thing is that isn't a printing shop and not have to constantly worry about modifying your ordinance. I mean, you're going to want to modify it because you're going to want to change your regulations, but hopefully, we can come up with something that's more flexible that you're not like, boy, I never thought of that. We—now we have to change it again.
Thank you.
Would you say it would simplify making changes to it, being able to just go to the one table and remove one thing rather than having—or add one thing rather than have to go through the whole thing and try to find which which ones are applicable? I like the layout, especially the way you had it laid out on the screen here. In our background, it was set up with a bunch of, you know, lines and then the tables in the middle. So I like the way that it had—to the left and, you know, the descriptions. Then on the right is the table. Obviously, that makes it more visually pleasing and easier to read.
So I think we'll ultimately—oh, well, here's the other piece of the residential, and that's, you know, the lot and yard provisions. And again, I think that is something that really lends itself to a great handout because you do get people coming in quite often for building permits for a lot of these, you know, accessory structure, well, driveway. So you can—so you can just hand that out, and you don't even have to kind of direct them necessarily to the ordinance, which even if—you know, I think it'll be—I think we all believe that it'll be clearer and easier, but it's still a document that most people never use, and it's still going to be confusing for the average Joe who has to kind of wade through it, so. Okay.
If I can just ask a—just a quick question. If the commission is comfortable with the overall changed layout, we're hoping to continue that that same theme throughout the rest of the zoning code. So we'd like to kind of get a head nod and get the okay to move along and progress. Okay, we got to get a confirmed yes. Thank you.
That's for me, I don't like that.
Commissioner Awad gave it two thumbs up. That's pretty high.
Thank you.
And I think what we've talked about—correct me if I'm wrong, Regina— is the table we put together on the commercial-industrial was both, but we were thinking of splitting them just to reduce the groupings of the table, but also the regulations because that would get pretty lengthy. So I think we were—so you'd see that same kind of format with the business grouping and then the industrial districts. So—and then some of them—some of those kind of maybe, you know, like the TOD or some of those parks, they don't really lend themselves perhaps to the same kind of larger grouping because they're pretty individual districts that don't have a lot of commonality in their regulations. So you'll see kind of some of the older setup also. But I think the main ones that people are kind of really working with, developers or residents, that'll be the the main pieces that are modified. So just to go forward, as Regina mentioned, the council had raised a couple of questions during the discussion after after we met with the Planning Commission regarding some uses and some residential changes. And so we just wanted to itemize them for you because they would have occurred after our conversation. And we've made modifications or in the case, will be making modifications when we complete the residential. So one, they wanted to make sure that ice rinks were put in the ordinance. And our recommendation is to come up with an outdoor recreation use for residential that's a little broader than just ice rinks. Always somebody who wants to put in the biggest swing set in the world, you know, it'll just kind of encompass all of that and have some kind of standards. Greenhouses, they wanted to make sure those were allowed, and that's been added.
Can I—can I ask for clarification? When you talk about ice rinks, are you talking about somebody's backyard ice rink?
Yep, this is also the residential piece.
Rather than a park, I guess, is what I'm saying. Okay. Thank you.
There was a—in your current ordinance, there's a prohibition on exposed fasteners on metal roofs. That was a very specific request that came in kind of during this conversation. And so the council wants to—that revised that allows exposed metal fasteners.
What is an example of that?
I don't really have. Do you?
This came up as a request from a resident who asked that it be included in the city council discussion at their work session. And the request was that there are standing seam metal roofs, and then there are metal roofs that are—people still refer to them as standing seam, but I think technically, they're not considered standing seam because the fasteners for the ridges of the metal roof are exposed. So the request was that that additional type of metal roof be a permitted type of roofing material in residential, and the city council agreed with that request and included it in the recommendation for the zoning change. So an example would be the seam on a standing seam metal roof but where the—I guess the bolts, for lack of a better term, are visible instead of underneath.
Thank you.
The next one was kind of a lengthy discussion, and I—I'm sorry to say that I don't have the background, but apparently, there was a requirement on multifamily where the exterior materials are these certain high-quality standards, even though there were sites that were not readily available or readily visible to the general public. Apparently, there was a retaining wall, and it was really difficult for the public to actually be able to see that front. And the council was saying that that's just silly to make that high standard if, in fact, it's not really publicly accessible or visible. So we'll be taking care of that in the architecture and building standards. We talked about the listing of uses in one table. We had talked to them about that, and they were comfortable with that. We changed the satellite earth station antenna. It was something that was quite a bit outdated. I couldn't even tell you what it was. I mean, like, what the other thing was. So now, we've just updated it to kind of your typical satellite dish size and, you know, allowance for residential. One of the questions was about driveways in excess of 15% and the requirement for a variance. And so there was an interest in maintaining that percentage, but rather than having that set up as a variance standard, that it would be something that could be—we're recommending, looking at it on an administrative level to make sure that it can work with and there aren't impacts on adjacent roadways. It's always good to not set up the ordinance where you—your alternative is giving them a variance. So makes a lot of sense, and I think the criteria that are listed are—helps people understand better what what the goal is with that standard, which maybe was not quite as clear in the original wording. And then there was a question the council had raised about multifamily daycares. There was a particular limitation that is not consistent with the state law, and it is unclear where that limit came from. And so that's been revised to just be consistent with the state law. So does anybody have any other questions on the residential before we move slightly?
Commissioners, I just had the one—when I was reading through it, I noticed it was interchangeably using R3D and R4 zoning districts. I think we made a clarification on that, which was either—was it R—made it R4?
I believe what you're referencing is the R3D, the manufactured housing district, and that will be R4 in the new draft.
Yep. So we're going through 1 through 4 now, and we've collapsed a couple just to not get rid of the letters.
Right, so it was just something I noticed was— Right. So it was just something I noticed was throughout. I don't know if, maybe that hasn't been looked at at all as far as editing on it.
Yeah. There's a little bit, there definitely is more work that needs to be done on the residential. So I think we just want to make sure that you were all good with it before we kind of finished it up. So...
Gotcha.
A good look at that. Thank you. All right. So on the commercial industrial land use, basically we did that table, as I mentioned, with the grouping. We didn't really do too much drafting yet. We did, we did start doing some drafting under the old format, but wanted to make sure you were comfortable with the residential before we move forward. So this is a good example of the permitted uses and conditional uses. So this was how it kind of set up before with all the listings of all those items. And what we're doing is, again, putting them in that table. And you can see on the table on the right, it says retail sales and consumer goods and services. So that's what I meant. Rather than just having an alphabetical order list of, you know, multiple pages, we did try to, we tried to group the uses, but then we also grouped the uses in these larger headings so that people hopefully can go to them and find what is appropriate for the kind of use they're looking for. There's just too many uses, I think, without having some kind of grouping there. And I, I would say, so as I mentioned, we're doing several ordinances for other communities. I mean, some communities literally are just saying retail uses. They're not differentiating what you're selling. You've got a few that are more, you know, specific, or they have some limitations, or they're not in all your commercial districts. So we didn't, if, like I'm looking at the hobby store, hobby supply store, including handicraft classes, for example, that's on, that's like right under the D. That's permitted in the B2 and B3, but isn't permitted in the B4. And so because of that, it's called out separately. So we tried to honor the, the uses and the districts that they are currently in, just tried to, again, collapse them somewhat. And, and that's why you may end up with certain things. You know, commercial green, the 1, 2 up, you know, commercial greenhouses without retail are allowed in the B3 and B4, but not the B2. So I'm not really, it's not a judgment, it's just that, that's why you'll probably see a bit more on the listing. But it all gets under that retail sales, which I think is still a very good idea for people trying to locate things.
So when will the planning commission have the opportunity to pass judgment on whether or not these are included in the list? Because, I mean, you kind of pointed to the, the same one that stood out to me. It's like, why, why can't hobbyists sell in B3?
Well, I, I think that would be helpful if we get that kind of feedback. And that, that is in your packet. So if, I think if people have specific questions about some of those, those are, that's kind of the next thing we're tackling. And some of these do have standards, even if they're permitted uses. The one I can think of is the thrift store that's under 5,000 square feet. So we'd have thrift store, and then the standard is going to be 5,000 square feet and under. So we just need to know if, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're capturing what you want. And so I would, I appreciate people liking the table, but I think we're at the point where people need to decide if, you know, they're comfortable with the regulation in some manner. I mean, I know you don't have all the standards in front of you, but...
So what's in the table is, you took our, our, you know, our regulations and just put them in the table. And that's why it's allowed in B2 but not B3.
Yes, although we did collapse them somewhat too.
Okay.
So I don't want to say there, you couldn't necessarily mirror it all exactly because, like, like the small appliance repair, we might have called it that instead of all listing all those things. And on something like that, I, you know, I did it a while ago. I don't want to, we might have fudged on one. You know, if it was like dishwashers weren't all three, but lawn mowers were only in two, we might have just said they were all small.
Okay.
You know?
So you made minor modifications, but there's still, you're still looking for feedback from outside on what these, you know...
Yeah, like this one was so clear and it didn't group with anything, you know, so then we just, there was no reason to move it into something else.
Okay.
And I, to be honest, there's a lot of uses. And so I think probably nobody, as I mentioned, I think people may, cities make changes when things come up. You don't necessarily every time revamp your whole, all, your whole list. And so it's probably good now that you've got maybe a shortened list to look at it with a critical eye about what, what you think should be where. Which is also why, you know, you've got the zoning ordinance because maybe even though it makes sense, like you think, well, why couldn't they be in the B2, B3, B4? And then you look where the B2 is and you think, well, no, that doesn't make any sense. So you kind of have to match back and forth.
But it also exposes us for crazy, you know, different, different sections and different ordinances. So that's good. Good to be able to look at and see, well, this doesn't make sense, right?
But I think that background that you provided about how cities do their work and, you know, they adjust their ordinances as things come up. I mean, it gives a little defense to the fact that, you know, there was no intention to some of this craziness.
Right, right. It just, it just is. It looked like that. When you look through it, it looked like, you know, this came up at some point, so they added it in there, basically. Yeah.
And you can tell, like on some of them, the standards are so specific that you know that somebody, you know, somebody applied for the 12 foot something and that's why it's 10. You know, it's, you can guess. So, so yeah, I think, I mean, I, I know I would really appreciate, and I'm sure the staff would too, you know, if people have specific uses that are in that table that you think you can put it with something else, or you want it in more districts, I, I think that would, this is the right time to do that.
So our next step after this meeting is to get, as long as you're okay with the new template, new format, is to get that posted on our zoning website with the redlines. And then we'll send that out to you for you to, to take the time, read, digest, and then provide some written comments back, similar to what was done with the residential standards. And then we'll bring back that redline for, for discussion based off of all the comments we receive. So we really need you to do your homework. Collapse those uses.
It'll be a bit to put the whole commercial industrial together, Regina. So I, I guess if, if they were just chomping at the bit to look at the table, that would, I mean, that'd be fine too.
We could do it in pieces.
Yeah. Cause I mean, it's still all a draft anyhow. You know, we're just gonna post it and get the comments from you all and the council and the EDA and everybody. We had some residents even comment, so.
That's good.
Oh, that is it. Okay.
Any more information? Commissioners, any questions or anything you would like to ask? Commissioner Wallace?
Just one quick question. When it comes to the commercial survey that's out there right now, where's the deadline to that, just in case we have any listening audience that might be, you know, thinking about doing it?
Well, I, you know, we haven't really talked about it, but I'm guessing a couple weeks we need to start reining it in. Because some of this, at least we want to be able to use for some of the, more the architectural design standards and then process piece comes later. But I think we want to make sure we reflect any concerns in the draft for the CNI.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Ms. Lindquist. Really appreciate you coming in today.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to our next place on the agenda. I believe that is updates. Any updates from commissioners? None? Commissioner, staff?
Yep. So your next planning commission meeting will be Monday, March 14th. So we anticipate that there will be two public hearings that evening and possibly some community engagement as part of that. So that's my main update. Anything to add, Regina?
Tentatively, we have scheduled your check-in with Councilmember Schultz. It's tentative at this point. We need to make sure that her calendar is free and that she's able. Certainly if you have any questions that you want us to, to bring up beforehand, we can certainly facilitate that. Otherwise, she may be here on the 14th.
Anybody have any questions that they want to bring up now? Or we can email you if we have one come up. Perfect. Well, thank you. I believe that's it for updates. That moves us to the next portion of the agenda, which is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Commissioner Anderson?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Timmerman, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us tonight.